Turn on your phones, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additional agenda items? I have none.
When I was talking to the school today, they said they might be interested in buying this unsigned, this children's center. I didn't know whether you guys knew that. So I think they're gonna put a bid in.
What?
So I just wanted to share that.
Do it.
Here we go. Here you go, Jane. We're really proud of you.
Can you get an ad voiding that? Alright, do you need a motion on the consent agenda?
I will approve the consent agenda.
Second?
I'll second regarding the town council minutes, yes.
Motion made in second, open favor?
Aye.
Move on down to new business. Public Works Capital Improvement Project.
We have a project coming up on 11th and J Street. We already have the lift station, sewer lift station there completely rebuilt. Capital improvement budget, we said fifty thousand dollars. We're coming in with, we don't have all the bids for the labor in yet. We're coming right, right at that, at that amount. So we have one little bit lower, one little bit higher, waiting for a third bid to come in on that. Sean made a... No, made a power point. I said I made a power point.
You made a power point.
And basically, this is 11th and South J. And it's kinda hard to see. Actually, there's only one pump in here that's operational.
Go back.
Hurry up.
There's none now.
They're not rushing you.
It's probably not gonna work anymore. Yeah, there's one pump in here that's actually operational. The other one, we sent off the first of July. It still is not back. So if something happens to the other pump, we're gonna have a really big problem. This pump, it's called Duplex System. They're both mismatch pumps. They're supposed to be the same. And they, over the years, just have not done what they're supposed to. They've added an old pump here, changed it to new, vice versa. So it's starting to cause some problems. It's running about four times longer than other duplex pumps in our system. This one station, then, right around two and three quarters hours a day, the one, the same size as this, is usually right around an hour to an hour and a quarter. So one pump is working three times as much. And like I said, this is a moderate station for us. There are smaller ones, and then obviously have bigger ones, OSP and Pooh Palace. And if this fails, it's not gonna pick up the other two stations beyond it. So you got the next one?
Thank you.
What we're proposing doing, this is basically what a wet well is. A pump down the bottom, you got inlet and an outlet. It's pumping it from one area to get it pumped to our stations, OSP and Stock Run, Pooh Palace. And that's kinda basically the principle of what it is. And like I said, the maintenance issue for our entire system, as everybody knows, has not really been existing. They can last a long time. What we found out with the pump that we just pulled is it's beyond a jeers already. So moving on. This is what's happening with our pumps. They're clogging up the stuff. And I tried to get the cleanest pictures I could. But this is some of the issues. One of the pumps in OSP that we actually just got done repairing, it actually have a two by four stuck in it.
I was gonna say.
And like I said about maintenance, as I've noted, there hasn't been much. And in the past couple months, you know, we've been trying to get more maintenance going. The stations are being checked daily now. For the time visually, make sure stuff's not leaking. This root wad, this is out of one of our sewer lines. That's Dylan from Public Works. Show you how big this sewer can be plugged. They actually, didn't they use a backhoe?
They used a backhoe and a truck.
Backhoe and a truck to get this out of the sewer. And this root wad was probably from me, the mayor, from the lift station.
So gross.
So with the maintenance we're doing now, you know, this is part of why we're talking about a capital improvement redoing that station. Because we're getting a handle on it slowly but surely. Next. Now comes the painful stuff. This is what, this is a brand-new station, so obviously ours won't be that clean. But what we're proposing, two new pumps, the systems to make them go up and down, as well as an overhead crane, so the guys don't have to go down there and try to manually pull these out. And basically, the prices we're getting for basically the whole new setup is twenty-one thousand.
Do they clean the whole outfit?
Yeah, will, yeah, they'll clean it as best as they can get it cleaned out. A new pump for the same-sized pump is what we have being fixed is eleven thousand dollars. This is actually out of USA Blue Book, which is kinda like the cheapest place you can get pumps. And then here, I put a little note, the pump being serviced right now is about six thousand right now. And now you can basically, we're almost at four months. And they told you today on the phone? Next week.
So you need two of those pumps right there?
Yeah, basically, this whole, this whole unit right here is that whole, that price. So you, for everything. Cause you'll have new chains, you'll have new crane, new elbows, new pumps. And then that's what'll get us up to par. You go to the next one?
So it's ten thousand for the two pumps?
Oh, go back. It's ten thousand for two pumps through this end here. These are wide little pumps. They're close to flight, flight being the best. Flight, I think, is way out of our budget right now. But these pumps are good. They're guaranteed. They're more efficient.
They last for a while.
Yes, they, if they're maintained, if they're pulled usually monthly and cleaned, they'll last. You know, so it's an investment thing. As long as they're maintained. That's the biggest kicker that is on these, with any of these lift stations. So you can go to the next, please? This is an estimated cost of labor. It's a rough cost.
Well, I can see it.
It's twenty-seven thousand, three twenty-four.
Just for me?
That's for labor. As you can see, it's not exactly a wonderful place to work. It's biohazard, it's confined space. And usually, like, one of the engineers that I talked to, these are professionals. This is all they do. They don't dig ditches. They just do these systems. You know, they've gotta go in. We pump it down as best we can. If you see this big five thousand right here, that's a bypass pump, which we don't own. They have to go upstream, plug it, put a bypass over to the other manhole, so they can get in there and clean it. You know, this is one thing that I think we're gonna need to address later in the budget cycle sometime, is if we have one of these stations fail for any reason, we have no way to pump that sewer to the next line. None. And the closest one that I can find is a climate fault. So the total estimate, rough estimate, is forty-eight thousand, three forty-eight. We're still working with other outfits. There's one out of Washington that did a job about a year and a half ago. They came in just about twenty thousand to come do this exact thing. But this is what we're proposing to do with that fifty thousand capital improvement. And thank you for your attention.
I'm gonna go back to the favor.
Any questions?
So this money's already kind of allocated?
It is. It's in our sewer budget as a capital improvement only. And that's what it can be useful. We can fix pumps with it. We can go buy a new truck. It's for a capital improvement.
So when you say, we just need like a couple extra pumps sitting around over there, is that what we need just like?
I think what my plan would be, if depending on Troy, is we updated our system, rehabilitated it. Like the pump that we're getting fixed now, we're gonna eat that one, we'll have a backup. And as we go through this, we'll try to do a station at a time if needed.
How many stations are there?
Seven total. And out of those seven, two are our main station, OSP and the Pooh Palace.
Now that, even that backup one, can you mix match with this one? Just for backup?
For an emergency, yes.
It'll all fit in there?
It'll all fit in there, yes. Cause one of the things is rails vary. Some rails you can get, they're smaller, they're bigger, but you can rest it in an emergency. I mean, quite literally, if you do it safe, you did it right, we could drop an old pump on there until we could get a new pump here in a week. You could literally set it on there, bolt it on. It's just gonna be, somebody would have to go swimming for a little bit.
Sewer water? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
So can that be added to the infrastructure grant? Something like that, to give the extra components?
I have been looking into some of that. As a matter of fact, I'm doing an EPA thing that I found, and they're asking what infrastructures small or rural communities need. Their big push is they wanna see everybody go to a plant and get rid of lagoons. But that being said, they still have lift stations, even with plants. So that's one thing I'm looking into. I've got a list already going on these different things that we need.
So the grant, would that be a grant that would go through you, or would it go through?
So the grant season is starting. And so we're looking for everything that we possibly can for infrastructure, for water, for sewer. And I've asked Troy and Sean and Scott to all look with me and then to send me down what they found. Because there's a lot of them gonna be coming out, and I might not catch all of them. So that's why they're starting to compile stuff, because the season for grants are coming like January to March. So I've been, I've been watching on different websites to make sure that we're included in getting some infrastructure dollars. So it's a big task, and we're gonna need to have it put into a five-year and ten-year plan. We've gotta put it, we've gotta start it next year. We just don't have the luxury to wait.
But you get the money to do this part?
Yeah, well, like I said, we can, with what it is, that was a rough estimate total. We're still looking for some more bids to do the job. I think as time goes by, as crew gets more familiar with some of it, maybe they'll be able to change out the pumps in real. Right now, we got a good group of guys, but we haven't really done anything that I'm aware of in the lift stations, other than emergency, pull the pump, and that's it. And then we send it off and hope we get it back in a, in a good time. And you know, I've been going since I started doing the numbers. The numbers are every day. I can see which pumps run it more, which is last, it's on the spreadsheet. And that's what's concerning me about this pump and this station. It's almost run as much as our big stations. And that causes a little bit scariness to me.
Do we have a eBay account?
Well, I have eBay and Craigslist.
Looks like prison uniforms.
You think those six hundred pumps have to have tree stuff in it, jump like that?
They're good.
They're good?
Yep.
We did, we did pull and wash down every one of those stations in August. So it was August, I believe August, around the tenth, the second week in August, we did that. So that was the first time it been done in quite a while.
Yeah. You know, like I said, you know, roots like this, from my experience, that doesn't happen overnight. That's just lack of maintenance. That's just not doing what should be done in the system.
So is that Dylan on the right or the left?
This is Dylan. That's the road. Well, thank you.
Okay, council, any more questions on that?
So if it's a capital improvement project, do we need to vote on it or anything? If that's what we spend donors?
It's already in the budget.
It's in the budget.
But he's doing the right thing, getting the bids, so it means right so far.
I wanted him to present it to you so that you knew what was going on. And the kind of, the condition that we're working with, and that Public Works is working in, water and special projects. It's a lot, and they're doing a great job. But I felt it was really important for you to really see, like, if, if we were just gonna say, hey, we're gonna do a capital improvement project, this is how much it costs for pumps, it wouldn't, you wouldn't know.
Right, yeah. No, I appreciate the, I just didn't know if we needed to do anything.
Nope, we're good.
Good job.
Good job.
Okay, let's move on down, North Water Extension Contract, Michelle?
So we've got the North Water Extension Contract. And I would like to have the council approve the North Water and Sewer Intergovernmental Agreement, subject to the town manager's review and approval. And here's why. We, part of the contract is that the town will approve the engineering plans prior to the contract. And if you go to the end of your contract, you'll see three pages given to us by Atkins Engineering of all of the things that need to be fixed, or added to, or improved on, or detailed out before I'm comfortable signing the contract.
You want to speak on this a little bit, Michelle?
You know, that would be great.
Michelle, is this, is this contract with the county?
Yes, it's with, actually, this contract is between the town and actually the town manager and Barry Shulenberger. So what the town has promised is that we want to have all of this fixed, and then we'll approve the engineering plans. We are also, anything that we go out and inspect with Scott or with Dan from Atkins, any communication that needs to be taken place will go directly to Barry Shulenberger. So we, we're simply agreeing that we want that built, and we'll approve the plans, and then we're out. Then it's up to the county to do the RFP, to make sure that all of these corrections get done, to manage the construction and the engineer. And then when the project's done, we do a final inspection, and then the town will accept the North Water Extension.
I know, but like, are we gonna pay five hundred thousand, or they're gonna pay five hundred thousand?
No, there's no cost to the town on this project.
Really?
Michelle?
Yeah, the county's paying the whole bill. They've got grants and some other money.
Scott, you guys, this here is the changes that need to be made?
That's correct.
All of them right here.
Is this the one that was sent to Barry the day that we had the meeting?
That's correct.
And did, did they approve this with the contract, or did they say something different?
Well, see, so I'll kinda interrupt here for a minute, Barry. It's not a matter of approving this. Most of this is code violation. The job cannot be approved if it isn't fixed, because they don't meet OHA and DEQ code, and that's why they were written up. Not all of them. And I will say that what's on here is very minor. And the conversation, I actually have a remark, because Barry wasn't here, is it's cheaper for them to deal with this now upfront than it's gonna be when it's a change order down the road, when a DEQ or OHA tells them that it's not, not for code.
Does that like from here to the, like from out there by Mexican restaurant to the cemetery?
From the cemetery to the Shell Station.
No, I know that, but I mean, the stuff we have to fix.
No, this, this is on the current plan for, from the cemetery to the Shell Station. This hasn't been built yet.
I, I know, but I thought you said you, we had to fix some things before they?
They have to fix these things on the plans.
Who fixes these?
The engineer, it needs to go back to the engineer.
Okay, that's what I asked her. Okay, I get that.
Corrections, these are all corrections on the plans.
Yeah, I thought there were some things we had to fix before they went on to do that.
So what you're saying is that these are the corrections that have been made?
These are the corrections that have to be made on the plans.
Have to be made, but have not been made.
Have not been. We just got this last week, I think. So it's been submitted to the county, Barry's looked at it, and from what I understand, I could be wrong, but what I was told, is it's already been forwarded to their engineering, they're working on it, they're hoping to have these changes taken care of back then by the end of this week for the next year. So there has been no real dispute on what has to be done, because most of this, because of the changes in OHA and DEQ code, most of this is, is code update that has to be done on those plans.
Different pipes or whatever.
Just on the plans.
It's most of this way, and stuff like that. There's nothing here that's really made here. It looks like a lot, but it's really not a lot.
Which is why I'm saying approve, based on, subject to my final approval and sign off.
But I think the council should also.
Okay, we can bring it back.
We have your final approval, you know, without just signing off.
I do too.
Okay, then we'll bring it back.
Yeah, let's do it like.
I mean, we can say okay tonight, but when it's all said and done, I think we need to.
We need to know what has been and done.
Okay, to move forward with a final approval.
Massive progress. Yeah, okay.
This part's been great to be down.
Yeah, so when this gets, when we get the approval from Atkins, because he'll go over the plans again, then I'll bring the contract back to council, and then we'll move forward with the North Extension.
And none of that will affect the internal agreement that we are discussing.
Atkins did. Is this exactly what you'd have from Atkins? I missed C, 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 Scott.
Well, I didn't know who Mr. Perry was. Who's Mr. Perry?
That's Michelle Aldego.
I didn't even realize that I said that.
No, their names go different. Okay, so we'll go ahead and table this.
That's a good idea.
Well, we could, we could say it's okay for her to start, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
But it's underway.
Yeah, we should have these changes, from what I'm hearing, and I haven't been able to talk to Barry, because he's.
Well, I think we just decided that Nelson would look at those before he signed off on us.
So yeah, it's, everything's moving forward.
Yeah.
They're waiting to get it out to bid, but they can't get it out to bid till these changes have been, they can't sign off to bid.
Alright. So let's move on down to the DRJ, call Trent. Michelle?
So the town of Lakeview has been awarded from the Department of Justice Community Office of Policing, a grant. It's a five-year grant, and we will be keeping the school resource officer. And then it also allows us to either hire a new deputy, or rehire someone who is laid off. So we'll be working to get all those details in place, but we have officially accepted the award.
There's three hundred?
Three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
So they can just keep on the gal that's here though, right?
That's the intention, yes.
She has to reapply?
I don't know. That's up to the sheriff, but I, I know everybody is super happy with her as a school resource officer.
I was just wondering if she had to reapply, and they're gonna have other people. That's okay, I mean, that's the process.
I think everybody wants to keep her on as a school resource officer. So, but I'll keep you up to date on what the sheriff's office is gonna wanna do.
So that's a seven, seventy-five thousand each year. Is that how they pay that?
No. How they're paying that, and I'm asking you to make sure that I understand it, so this is tentative. They will pay us a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, year one, year two, year three.
And then we keep them for two years after that?
That's correct. So what's different this year in this grant as opposed to the year prior is that the Department of Justice really wants communities to hire and to figure out how they're gonna keep them going, instead of just relying year after year on the grant.
So you said it's a five-year grant, and a hundred and twenty-five thousand for three years.
And then the final two years are, we're on our own.
Oh, we can do whatever we want.
As long as it's within the grants.
Within their guys, yeah.
So that could be a budget item after three years?
Yes.
If we don't get another grant?
That's correct. We can apply for another grant, but we can't duplicate this, so we have to apply for a different cost grant, like maybe a victims thing, or drugs, or, I don't know, they have a whole bunch of different ones, but we wouldn't be able to duplicate this.
Okay.
Alright, let's move on down to the water sewer rate increases?
So January first, twenty twenty-three, we raise our rates. I'm just getting this into everybody's, I'm planting the seeds now. Rate increases are always very difficult for the community. And it's difficult for staff if we don't start talking about it now, so that when questions start to come up, they're able to answer the questions for the community, and the community can also give us feedback. But we're increasing it to the Portland.
CPU Computer Price Index, CPI.
Yes, this price index.
CPI?
And.
Is that a last three percent or?
No.
Five, seven, eight?
Eight point three.
Eight point three.
Eight point three?
For, right now, it, it might.
So it'd be eight point three of forty-two dollars or something?
So if you look, we've, it's.
Oh, it's in my pack.
It's in your pocket.
There's visuals, Jay, or?
Like this, Jay?
Yeah, I got this.
I'll let you get to it. Because there's, you know, we've got in-town residential, in-town commercial, out-of-town residential. So it depends on what.
Where you're at.
Yeah, yeah.
Could you find it, Jay?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure.
So this is informational, and to start the discussion now. And really, we, everything's getting expensive, so.
So we have a lot of ground grass in town?
So that, our base rate will kind of be comparable now with this raise to like John Day, or it won't even be close, we're still low?
And if you look at the press release, I did put an example in there showing across the state.
We're about fifty percent.
Right now, when I talk to Scott, the mayor from Winston, Michelle was standing there, and Don and Sheila, they're paying water and sewer both, on average, between eighty and eighty-five dollars.
It's just that we have.
And it's only, they're only five thousand people.
So this'll just be the third year that we've raised it with the Consumer Price Index. Prior to that, we weren't able to, but we just didn't.
There wasn't any raises.
So that's, so I'm just gonna keep giving you information so that it gets out into the community, and so we can start talking about it.
So we should show the pictures, huh?
But those are the papers.
Let's let people know that we are doing, we're fixing stuff.
Well, yeah, and I think that people are starting to see that we're moving the ball forward in all of our departments. It's a good thing.
It's a positive thing.
Looks like we did poo poo.
Well, I could have brought some, I could have brought some good ones.
Anybody else have anything on this, on this one? By us doing this, it does a better chance of getting more help, more chances to get money from the state. By us doing this, it does a better chance of getting more help, more chances to get money from the state.
Says limit your shall it.
All right. If, if nothing else on this, then we'll move on down. Public comments. Do we have any public comments out there? I'm hearing none, okay. Any other, are there any staff comments?
Nope, not for me.
You feel all right? You're not making a comment?
Hard to believe.
Okay. Council, do you have any comments?
I do. You know, I always have a comment here.
Yep.
Several months ago, we talked about having a work session regarding the budget. And I would like to try to set a date regarding that.
Okay.
Let's go.
We can, no, we don't.
Okay. I just think that we need to be more prepared on the budget.
Correct.
Okay.
Looking at December twenty-three?
You are, huh?
Yeah.
We can just do it every, council.
It's going to be gone two weeks.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
Or before, or before one, either way, that doesn't matter.
In December, we only have one council meeting.
Well, that narrows it down.
That does.
Can we have it in November? We can have it in November.
And we have one in November too.
When?
November eighth.
Okay.
That's the only one.
Election day, yeah.
Yeah.
The eighth and the twenty-second.
Council meeting at five o'clock on Tuesday the eighth.
Tuesday the eighth?
Yep.
Okay.
So I can do a work session at four o'clock if you guys would like.
Do I go before or after?
I'm, either way, either way. Before or after is whichever works best for the council.
So the.
Do we need more than an hour is the question. I think that'd be fine.
What did you say?
The eighth, the.
At four o'clock.
Eighth?
November eighth.
On the election day?
Yeah, election day at four o'clock.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll put it on up here.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Appreciate that.
Also, on the November eighth meeting, you've got, I forgot, I do have a staff comment. On the November eighth meeting, you guys will have a two planning quasi judicial coming to your attention on that day that will, a decision will need to either be made or table to another meeting.
From the planning commission?
From the planning commission, okay.
Do you want us to know what it is first?
No, thank you. I'll send you the documentation. But thanks for sharing it, Charlie, for trying to.
And then in December, what day in December do we have the training?
Oh, yeah, we need to do that.
Oh, December sixth.
December sixth.
You guys will be going to Clemens for council training.
Town council school.
And yes, it is a school. And I've got to talk to Michelle budget-wise because they made it till seven o'clock that night. So we'll be there from nine o'clock in the morning till seven, that night.
Is that where you were talking about spending the night there?
Yeah.
Yeah, because of the weather?
Because I do worry about the roads coming home.
It starts at what time, nine?
Nine.
Nine.
A nice short class.
Okay.
Oh, she changed it this year. This is the first year that Patty will change everything.
Yeah.
So yes, I send you all up for council school.
Okay.
Good with that?
Anything else? Even will adjourn the meeting at five thirty-four and be back here at six. So make sure your phones are silent. Stand for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How much do I need?
Okay, I'm seeing this as informational water. Troy, you're up.
Well, I think Amber is going to go first, talk about water quality, and then I'll go second.
Okay. It doesn't matter, somebody go.
Yeah, I'll go third.
I was going to say, do you have a, are you opening for us? Is there anything else?
Well, I guess, I mean, I have a very little bit of information. Finally, we're getting the pump guys over here to video. We do our downhole video of all the wells. So the next couple of days, we will shut the wells off, pull in motors and pumps, videotaping the wells to see, to check our aquifer and the condition of all of our wells and pumps. That's going to be a very important part of the design of this plant. We've been trying to get them here since April. So when they called, we were very happy to say, yeah, well, we'll make it work. Troy's going to be working with me on that tomorrow. It'll be tomorrow, Thursday, and then I think they have to be in Clemens on Friday to do another job for Clemens School District. And we're going to try to get them back next week for the other two wells. It'll take about a day for each one of the wells. At this point, we're going to do four of them, four of the five. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, good job.
Yeah, exactly.
Amber, go ahead.
Okay, evening, mayor and council. So just wanted to, so I've got a little background information. And then this was our, our second round of water quality testing that was performed. So we've got some new data in here and then just a little bit of information on the previous work that was done for folks that, and identification of the issues for folks that weren't here as part of the earlier presentation and discussion. So the, so my name is Amber Headspith. I have a company, Headspith Land and Water. We do environmental consulting work and do a lot of work with groundwater, drinking water, surface water, storm water. That's kind of the, the main part of our work. And we are working in support of Anderson Perry in town, helping with the water sampling associated with supporting Anderson Perry to get the best water treatment facility choice for town. I just got back from vacation yesterday, so this is just, that's my cute little husband. So that's just the picture. So a day ago, I was on vacation, so I was having a hard time coming up with words this morning. So in case I, I'm, I'm still have vacation brain, so I'm within twenty-four hours. So I just wanted to say that's why. So just a reminder that the basin here that, that most of the water comes from, so right, we've got groundwater wells and then we've got the spring where your, the two sources where your drinking water comes from. So just a reminder that you've got an alkaline water base here that, that your water comes from. And so that is, the mineralization of that water is one of the sets of issues that town deals with.
There's a lot of water to be taken.
Oh, oh, there we go, okay. And then we've got the spring system. So just, just a reminder that the groundwater is the majority of the water source, but we also have the spring source. So we've got two different sets of issues there associated with the groundwater source and then a surface water source for the water. So we've got the seven primary wells. This was a picture for the wells and the tanks associated with the system. And then initially, when we did our, our drinking water sampling, we sampled all of the wells. And then the higher producing wells, we did the secondary testing on. We have a delay on the computer. So just a reminder, the, our information for folks that, so there are primary and secondary drinking water standards through the EPA. And that those, those are all, there's, there's a couple pages. You can just go ahead and flip there. So just wanted to let people know that there are, the primary drinking water criteria is set forth for if there are physical issues basically that could happen to someone, if something would make you sick, if it would cause you cancer, if it would cause some kind of organ failure or disease. So those are the things that they, that they take care of in the primary drinking water standards. And then the secondary standards are more about the aesthetics of the water. Does it look bad? Does it smell bad? Do we have other issues with it? So, well, one of the weapons and issues that we're dealing with, so arsenic is present in most water sources in Oregon to some level. It's naturally occurring. So we have more of it on the east side of the Cascades and to the south in the older soil formations. We have higher concentrations. So it has other sources that it can come from and ways that it can get into the water. But just a reminder that what we're dealing with here is not from an industrial activity that we're just dealing with a naturally occurring issue. And arsenic is, then is a primary drinking water standard. And so because there's a number of physical disease and implements that can, that can happen from drinking excessive concentrations of it. The other, two of the other issues that we're dealing with with town's water is that iron and the manganese. So again, naturally occurring, iron in it is a, is a secondary standard. It, it, it doesn't cause any physical issues other than, well, I guess it doesn't have any real physical issues. It's just, it's an aesthetic issue. So you guys all know what your sinks and toilets and things look like. So same thing with manganese, naturally occurring, existing, more of a secondary issue, color, smell, taste, these are the things that are, you're seeing in the water system. So this was an example of one of the samples that was taken. This well obviously has an iron and manganese issue. And so we have the iced tea looking water going there. So you also see this issue in your.
That's well eight.
That was, I didn't say that.
That was well eight. That was well seven.
Perfect.
Well seven. Didn't mean to interrupt you. I was like, wait, timeout.
Excellent. So a little typo there, one well off. So just again, the colors you're seeing, the combination of those two things, the buildups in the pipes, one of the issues that will be addressed by the water treatment facility. So another issue that we have in the water is turbidity, which is just the, essentially the particulate, which can be from many different sources, but it's essentially the cloudiness of the water. And we've got a picture of that.
We probably already seen it.
Yeah, so up there in the top. So it's the difference between when it comes out and what you're seeing initially in the water. And then it, at, after time, it'll settle out if the water isn't disturbed any longer. So that can be an issue. So just a little discussion here, just have a little analogy about how we, about the, the sampling overall. So if you're, if you're, the way I was thinking of it is, you know, you're there, your car won't start. So it's like, do I have gas in it? Do I, you know, is the battery charged? So that, that's how I wanted you guys to think about the drinking water sampling that we did. Because the first step we did, we did a lot of testing. And then based on those results, we did other things. So it's like, do I have gas in the car? Well, that's a big question. Do the spark plugs need to be changed? Well, that's a, that's a smaller secondary kind of question. So that's what we did with the water quality testing. We did a lot of tests to look at a wide variety of things. And then based on those results, we said, okay, we also need to get information on this and this and this and that. So our second round of testing was a, was a smaller battery of tests. So this was from our first round of testing. So we had a few exceedances. We had some arsenic issues. We had some fluoride issues, turbidity in many of the wells. So, so that was, you know, part of when we're considering things. And when Troy and Anderson Perry is going to be looking at, what do we need? What kind of treatment does the water need to meet the best standards? These are the things we're looking at. So on our second round of testing, we did, like I said, it was a smaller, we did a smaller battery of tests, but they, they were some more pointed tests. So this is a semi, semi inorganic compounds that we did. And just so you see there, that, so what's on the very left is the name of the compound that was tested. And then the result is the next column in. So N D stands for non-detect. So I can't.
What's the one point seven? Is that just you, you?
Standard?
You did one point seven of a liter or something?
No, that's, so up at the very top is, is what each of the categories are.
I see A L R.
Yeah, so that's, that's the lower reporting level. So that's, that's just telling you for that compound, it has to be at least to that level or the laboratory can't identify the compound and will, it'll have a non, a non-detect result. And so the, the, the big take home there is that the non-detect in the left-hand column. So you can just, we'll, we'll go one more. And then, so again, the, the list of compounds continues on the left. There are the perfluorated compounds. And then, so this is up on the very left-hand corner. So this was for each of the wells. So we're seeing well six, well seven, we've got non-detect results there. Well nine. And then we go to the inorganic compound list that we have here. So again, so the far left column is the EPA test number, which comes off of the drinking water standards that you guys saw. Sorry, just get my handy over here. The next column is the analytes, what we actually tested for. And then the result column, the units it's recorded in, the lower reporting limit, and then the maximum level. So happy to go through that with anybody that has any questions. I can leave some cards if anybody wants to talk about water results in detail. As you can see, it's just, it's a lot to go through in this kind of format, so. But I think the big thing is just going back to the iron, the manganese, the turbidity, the sulfide is hydrogen sulfide. These are some of the compounds that we had the, that we're having the issues with and that we're going to be, that Troy and his folks are going to be designing the plant to renew. So we're going to be taking the color, the taste, the smell, the issues out of the water supply. So again, well numbers up in the left-hand corner, so you can just flip through there. So there was quite a, there's a higher degree of variability in these organic compounds or the I O C list. And all of the tests were negative for radiological. So based on the uranium history, that, that was tested for all the samples and they were all negative for all of those.
That's what I was going to ask you, you know where Alkaline Lake is? All the stuff they dumped in Alkaline Lake in forties and fifties, that won't come up over here, huh?
It's not, it's not showing up in any of your samples.
Like the two forty?
All that stuff.
So you're saying the plant will clean this all up? But what about all the existing pipes? How's it going to say it's clean?
It's not.
We'll, we'll be able to flush and get a majority of that stuff out. But the system in Lakeview is old and the damage is done. The only way that we're going to get everything out is going to be, once we get the plant going, I mean, that's the head of the, the animal here. Once we get the plant going, Troy will have this, Troy will get the tanks cleaned before we start pumping water from the plant to the tanks. We'll get the tanks cleaned and we'll work on hopefully more grants and more money to start replacing infrastructure throughout the town.
Well, will the infrastructure be somewhat self-cleaning over a period of time just through dilution?
It, you're, you've got so much, the pipe are so old that you will get some of the stuff out, but you're not going to get all of the house until we go through and start replacing. Because there's a lot of. Because there's a lot of old tar wreck steel still around here.
It's a billion.
And that's a big issue because it's steel and what we're dealing with, with the iron, manganese, the corrosion and the decay of the pipe, we're still gonna be dealing with that.
Does that plan to be as part of the major repair thing or just basically on an as-needed basis? It's old enough, it's gotta be getting to the point it's kinda dissolving on its own.
That's exactly what's happening and that's why these guys, Public Works spends more time running around fixing leaks than they do doing the maintenance and stuff that they really need to be concentrating on. So we'll be replacing those as funds are available, you know, we're going after grants. Every time we get a chance, we apply for every grant that's out there. And under these, the state and federal infrastructure acts, there should be quite a bit of money for the next couple of years at least to go after these to replace the water mains. We are actively working on a water meter replacement program that hopefully in the next few months that we'll have put together, which will replace all the service lines from the mains to the meters and replace all the meters with new, new meters, which will help a little bit. But until we can come up with the funding to actually get in and replace all the water mains, we're still gonna have a little bit of issue with their water, but it'll be a lot better than what we're dealing with now.
So what type of amount are you looking for, for funding to replace all of the pipes?
How many miles a mile do we have?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine. Forty-nine and a half, so you're probably looking at around right around fifty...
Or trade up here.
Fifty thousand. Fifty million.
You're looking between 50 and 60 million because of the cost of materials at this point. You're looking at about a million dollars a mile roughly is what water main is running, depending on, you know, diameter of pipe and the ground and everything else, how deep it is, but...
Any chance that the time we replace them will be scaling up at all for future growth?
Yes, actually the plant's gonna be built. Troy and I were just talking about that. We run about 1.7, 1.8 million gallons a day at peak in Lakeview, which is when everybody's hearing, eating their water and gardens and lawn. So we're building, we're probably, I think our water master plan shows that we're gonna build a plant at about 2.2 million a day is what it'll be capable of. And it'll also be set up for expansion to where all the filtration systems are skid on it. So we should be able to bring in another skid and that will add probably 250 to 500,000 gallons a day to that system, be able to treat without any major upgrades. So yeah, we are looking at the future as we build this.
And this was just the water line system and so that was part of it, that even though the water coming from the plant is going to be treated and, and we're going to have all those issues removed, there'll still be issues based on the piping, so. Okay, that's what I got. That's the water we want. That's what we're gonna have. So...
So you're done.
Yep.
I got the water.
Any questions? You know, they use this for small children now because I'm a grown-up, but it was set up for me as a child, so.
Because you kept getting lost?
I may have been troublesome. So does anybody have any questions? Any thoughts? Like I said, happy to leave some cards out and if anybody has any questions or you wanted to follow up with me about anything later, happy to share or answer that.
Thank you.
And Amber's presentation will be put online on our water treatment facility page as well. For anyone who didn't make it, they can go back and look at it.
I'm up.
Yep. Head back, next.
I appreciate you having me here tonight to give you an update on the project. It's kind of exciting to see you kind of moving along here. Those of you who don't know, I'm Troy Baker. I'm the Van Buren Carrying Associates out of the Redmond office, commissioned to help the town address your water quality issues with building a new treatment plant. So it's exciting to see it moving along. Just the topics of discussion tonight, I'm gonna talk about the tasks that we've completed to date, the results of our preliminary engineering evaluation that we've come up with so far, what's next, and then the overall project schedule, we'll review that. Just to follow up with what Amber was saying and what, and the work that her firm has done to assist us, the water quality sampling, testing and analysis has been done and we've prepared a technical memo to summarize all of those results and have provided that to the town. We've also done a water treatment facility process and tech analysis of alternatives available to town to treat the water and we've provided that to the town. Just right into the results, what we've, we've found so far. Based on the water quality sampling and testing, we've confirmed that the level of arsenic in the north well is above the MCL, which means the maximum contaminant level of the primary drinking water standard that Amber was talking about. So it's above the EPA's mandated level to, for drinking water standards. And there's elevated levels of iron and manganese in the town's wells as well as other things like turbidity that Amber was talking about. But the good news is, is that the water quality analysis does conclude that the town should be able to use and employ commonly used treatment processes to, to address it. So there's nothing weird in there that's gonna, you know, prevent you from doing something that hasn't been done before. Okay, as part of our technical evaluation and our engineering analysis, we laid out three alternatives. We called it alternative A, alternative B, and alternative C. Alternative A, what we looked at is, is what the master plan had, had concluded was the, the preferred alternative. And we'll talk about that later as to why we disagree, I guess. That requires a separate water treatment plant for, to, to address the north well separately from the rest of the town's wells. So basically what you would be doing under alternative A is building a treatment plant out at the north well and a treatment plant in town. So you would have two treatment plants to operate and maintain and you would have to construct a transmission line from the north well into town to connect it to the existing piping system. Okay, so that, that's alternative A. Alternative B, we looked at just one central water treatment plant to treat the north well and all the town's wells and can, and construct a transmission line from the north well to the town to connect it to this central water treatment plant. So we combined all wells, including the north well, and treat it in one central location. Okay? Alternative C was to defer the use of the north well, increase the capacity of the town's wells to get it up to the capacity that we need to get to the 2.2 or 2.3 million gallons a day that we need and treat for only iron and manganese because the rest of the wells do not have elevated levels of arsenic above the MCL. The only one that does, according to the data, is the north well. So in that well, we would, inherently, the process will treat arsenic. I mean, it, it will take arsenic out because you do have some in there. It's just not above the, the MCL. Okay? So those are the three alternatives we looked at. Okay, and under those three alternatives, we, we evaluated two treatment prost technologies to accommodate the treatment or to achieve the treatment. What's referred to as oxidation, precipitation, and then membrane filtration. And basically in any one of these processes, you have to add chemicals in order to oxidize those soluble materials that you can't filter and make them insoluble. So you create basically solids that can then be strained out. So that's the process we're looking at is adding, adding chemicals, typically an oxidation agent like sodium perchloride, just regular house bleach will do it. And then you make a precipitate out of it and then you filter it in some way. And so a membrane is just a, there's many different types, but it's just a, a very small sheet or ceramic material or a number of other materials that has very fine pores. So the pores space, as you filter the water through it, captures those materials that are bigger than pore and it brings the clean water through. So that's the difference between the membrane filtration and the granular media filtration is you're doing the same process except you're using some type of sand material or coal or granite or a combination of those, green sand is another one they call it, to actually do the filtration. And it, and it's a physical chemical process. So you're oxidizing, you're making solids and you're filtering them.
The membrane filtration, is that done under pressure or is that gravity feed?
That's, that's a pressure because the pore size is too small that you can't, you can't do it by gravity. And, and both of these processes are actually done under pressure, but a membrane takes more pressure. Can you, can you make that bigger?
Oh, maybe. I had to get up because I can't read mine.
There we go.
Do I want to close up?
Okay, so this is our estimated cost of the three alternatives, looking at the two different process types. So under alternative A, remember that's two treatment plants, building a pipeline to get the water from the north well to town. So you can see that the total estimated construction costs of a membrane and the media filtration is very similar. Not, not a lot of difference in terms of capital cost. You can see there that the total annual operations, maintenance and replacement is what the OM and R stands for, is $820,000 per year to operate the thing. So the total present worth, which is just taking all of that, those dollars throughout time and bringing them to the present so you can compare, you can see that the cost is 23 and a half million and 20, about 22 million for the granular filtration for alternative A. So just moving down, you can see that alternative B is a little less expensive, not a lot, but alternative C is significantly less, not only in terms of the overall operation of it, but the complexity, the capital cost is, is, is quite a bit less. You don't have two treatment plants to operate and maintain. So our conclusion was, based on our analysis, and I think we can go to the next slide, that we're recommending the town selects alternative C. And you build one treatment plant, you only treat the wells within town and you defer and mothball the north well, continue to have that and maintain the water rights so that if you ever need it in the future that you're, you can use it. But it's a significant cost to bring that water in from the north well and treat it and it's a relatively small amount. It's only 400 gallons a minute of flow relative to what you need. It's a very expensive source to develop because it's so far from town. So there's a significant cost advantage in alternative C. You only have a single treatment plant to operate and maintain. And just to further bolster this recommendation, the, the site out there at the north well likely is not large enough to even accommodate a treatment plant. So you'd have to actually build or acquire additional property just to cite it because it's not gonna be a lot different than what, you still have a filtration, oxidation, you know, filtration plant, just like you're gonna have in the central, just in a small, it's smaller, but still it's, you got a building, you're gonna have the filters, you gotta have somewhere to put the solids because you have to, any one of these processes, you have to clean the filters, you have to backwash them to get rid of the solids that you've removed. So that has to go somewhere. So you have to manage the solids. And so you're managing solids in two different places. You're, I mean, it's just, it doesn't make a lot of sense to do it that way.
Is the arsenic coming from the aquifer then, underneath that?
Yeah, I'm not sure why there's a, why there's a difference in arsenic.
Is there a chance that it could leak any other wells?
The other question I had is, what is our demand on the north well as far as supplying water? Is it basically intermittent during the peak season?
We haven't used the north well over 10 years.
Oh.
So we have a really high demand on it. I see how that works.
That's just the arsenic.
Because of the arsenic.
Yeah, it hit the MCL, they were, and this is all before I got here. Talking with Jeff Marshall, he was the one that was handling that. When they hit, they changed the MCL like two or three different times, 10, 12 years ago and they kept lowering it, lowering it. So they got to where that well was, had hit the maximum, they were blending that water. That well was actually designed to feed Goldmore Terrace. That's why it's so far out. And that's when Goldmore Terrace was developed and it was HOA and the Andrew Water System and everything. We ended up with it when it all fell apart. We got it dumped in our lap, so the town took it over. But they were running that well quite a bit and feeding that 100,000 gallon tank that sits up on the hill above Goldmore Terrace. Well, when the arsenic got bad, or so bad where they couldn't use it, we ended up connecting that 100,000 gallon tank to our tank so we could feed water over there. They were blending that and trying to use that well with our water, but it got to the point where we couldn't do that anymore and still keep the level low enough.
But actually still tank the rest of the process.
Yep. So they shut that well down. I believe he said it was 10, 12 years ago, but they haven't used that well.
So essentially it's just a backup emergency or something like need be?
Fire suppression or whatever.
Okay, well that kind of solves that problem.
Yeah, and the cost roughly to, to run line from that well all the way into town to discharge it, to the plant was between one and a half to two million dollars, depending on the price of pipe at the time.
Now it sounds like you actually still have a backup. If you needed to actually physically create water, you could backflush into the system so it's still active, it's just not used.
It's actually still hooked to that 100,000 gallon tank. We just gotta open a valve and we could pump water right into Goldmore Terrace from that well. But it's just, like Troy was saying, it's not cost effective.
I'm good with leaving it shut down. I like that.
Yeah, and what, and what we'll do is if we have enough water rights and we're getting ready to do your wells and see the health of the wells that we have, we may drill another well right at the water plant site to kind of replace that well and still be able to use that as a backup.
Yeah, that, that would be even cheaper. That would be a cheaper option if you needed more source.
Yeah, you're still, you know, you're looking a couple hundred thousand dollars to, to develop a commercial well.
Well, that's us though. We're a small town, we're cheap.
Yeah.
So let's say less expensive.
So what we're trying to do is maximize our bank for a buck. So we're really looking at the process and how we're gonna do this because the last thing Lakeview needs is another failed project.
Oh, yes.
So we're, we're trying to take a little more time in the design and the engineering side of this to make sure that when we turn that plant on, we're getting what we're trying to accomplish. And that's, you know, that's why we try to, I try to get Troy here every six months to give the town an update of what's going on, you know, because Facebook likes to say we embezzled all the money.
Yes, and it's all that destroys itself.
Wait, there are lies on Facebook? What?
Exactly. So it was getting bad again and that's why I asked Troy and Amber, you know, it's been six months. They were here in April and we did the last kickoff meeting for the plant. So we figured, well, six months, they ought to come back and we'll give another update so everybody knows where we're at. But that's, that's kind of the theory behind some of the alternative A, B and C that Troy and I have been looking at and sees what we came up with because it fits within our budget and we're still accomplishing what we need to accomplish. Because we haven't changed the process to treat the water. We just changed how we're, and what water we're bringing to the plant. And that, you know, and that was a significant cost savings.
I just wanted to share this. This is really a conceptual plan of kind of what the water treatment plant would look like. I think it's probably going to be shifted to the east side of the property there in the southeast corner there. But generally, you'd have a, you'd have a water treatment facility building where all the filters and all the equipment would be housed. And then you have a couple of backwash tanks that would store the backwash water from, from the treatment process. As I was describing previously, you have to manage the solids. So we put the backwash from the filters into those, we let the solids settle out. And then it's important for us to return that water back through the process so that we can recover that water that we've already treated. We don't want to waste that out. We want to recover it because, you know, water's precious and we don't want to waste it. And so we, we can get about 95% recovery of the, of the backwash water back through the process. And then we have to waste out about 5% of it into that blue pond area that I'm showing there.
How much water do you think that would actually take for backwash?
It varies with processes and we'll figure that out. I got another slide here, I'll describe kind of what's next and I'll kind of go over that. So, okay, the next step here is that the town is going to issue a request for proposals to solicit proposals from vendors to select and pre-purchase water treatment process equipment. And there's some, some real advantages of us doing that, especially in this environment of very long lead times of equipment and, and trying to get materials to do construction is very challenging right now. So this is a way for us to get ahead of the game. So that what we would do is we would put together this request for proposals, which would have very detailed instructions and technical specifications contained in it and the rules of the game, basically, for these vendors. That process would require the vendor to, as part of their proposal, to provide pilot study to confirm that, that their package is going to achieve the results. Basically, they would come, if the town selects a process and a specific vendor, that vendor would have to then set up a pilot for their specific process to pilot it and demonstrate that it actually works. Okay, so if it doesn't, then the town doesn't purchase that equipment, you know? So we confirm that it's going to work. Then we use that selected package as the basis of full-scale design once we confirm it works. So we can work with that vendor to lay out the, the plant so that we know exactly what we're going to do and so we can prepare our plans, specifications around that selected package, which has lots of benefits and allows the town to pre-purchase this package for the general contractor to install. So basically, you get the equipment before the general contractor even shows up or sometime shortly thereafter, depending on the timing, so that he's not waiting around trying to get this equipment a year later, you know, when he should be starting to put it in way sooner. So we're hoping that this process will allow us to reduce some construction time and possibly some design time. I think I shared this previously is, it's going to take us about three and a half to four years to complete. I mean, we're, we're currently in phase one. I mean, that's what we're doing right now, which is our preliminary engineering phase, and that takes us up through 30% design. So part of this phase one is to get this RFP issued and the equipment selected to allow us to move into phase two, which is our final design. So we'll go up through 30% design in phase one, phase two's final design, getting the bidding and contract documents together, ready to bid and put it out to bid, and then phase three is the actual construction. So we're looking at hopefully December of 2025 to commission the plant, bring it online.
Merry Christmas.
What's that?
Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Can I say something, Troy?
Yes.
So this is where my stress comes in. They have a timeline in December of 2025. We have to have that plant completed and all the paperwork into the state by September of 2026 to close out by December of 2026. That's a condition of our grant. We have the possibility of losing some funding if we don't have that done. You know, that's an eight or nine month barrier, but with getting equipment and getting contractors and getting everything lined up perfectly, it's not a very big safety net. And those, those are the things that I didn't sleep over at night. And I'm on Troy all the time. He's probably tired of hearing from me.
No, I totally understand.
You know, Anderson Perry's been great about keeping us on track. We might even be a tiny bit ahead. I don't want to say that too loud, but getting the, getting the product, getting the machine, equipment, and everything that we need is going to be a challenge. And that's why we've decided to go with the RFP program and get that out as quickly as we can to get in line to be able to get the equipment. But we do have some restraints by the state to complete this project, so it's.
Are any of the manufacturers of the equipment capable of producing each of the items as a modular system or do we have to basically draw from each and every other manufacturer?
No, they, these are, no, I don't think we have a picture on there. I've got some on my phone, I'll show you after the meeting, but these are skid mounted systems. So you build a building, you basically drop them in, slide them in, hook them up. It's a pretty simple system to hook up. And that's why, and going this direction is, is a way to make it easy to expand and a lot less expensive to expand. When we build this plant, like I was saying earlier, we will add probably one or two inlets that will be capped off in the building to where if we got to expand, we just buy another skid, we slide it in there, we hook up, computer system, everything will all line up and tie in together. So it's, you know, the expansion of the system's pretty.
We put all the electrical in, underground conduits and everything to easily.
So we're not coming in and cutting the floor out again, trying to add pipe and everything else. We're, we're going to, we're looking into the future, so we're going to set it up that way. And that's the other reason why we're going with skid mounted systems. And that's what most of your new modern water plants are, is they're all skid mounted systems. And that makes it easy to replace what you need to replace if it fails, and it makes it easy to expand when you need to expand.
Sounds like it should be done in '24 then. Sounds easy.
Or just fast assemble.
Should have had it done last week.
The crazy part is, is the process of moving forward with everything.
Getting the equipment's going to be the, yeah, getting the equipment's going to be the challenge and getting everything approved through OHA and state once we get to that point. Because there are backlog, just like everybody else because of COVID. So just getting, getting through the state process and getting the equipment figured out and ordered is going to be the challenge. And once we get there, you know, it's.
Well, the vendor, whoever this town selects, has to come out, design and set up a pilot study, so that's going to take a little time to do it. And it's very important that that be done, no matter how long it takes. I mean, you can't move forward without confirming, although we have very good data to support that it'll work, it just, I'm certainly not going to put my stamp on it until it, we know.
I have to live here and I don't want to move. If we put this plant together and it don't work, I'm going to have to move. And that's, you know, that's why the pilot program is very important and that's.
Huge.
Troy and I talked about this pretty extensively as we moved forward with this plant, and that was changed in the scope of how we were going to handle that pilot program because we actually want to run a pilot program with what we're going to use instead of doing a generic pilot program and hoping the equipment we decide to use works. So that's why we've changed that process. Two things, one, it's probably going to save us a little bit of time. It's not really going to save us any money, but it may save us a little bit of time.
Well, and luckily, I was thinking when we first started that we were going to run it about three months, but in talking to all these vendors as we were getting prices to do our evaluation of our alternatives, they indicated that nah, you'll, we'll know in two months, two weeks whether it's going to work or not. And what we have to do to make it work.
Do we know of any other cities that have plants that are basically similar to what you're looking at?
Yes, and I've spent quite a bit. Primeville has a plant almost identical to what we're going to build. I've been up there twice. I've worked with their operators in Primeville, the guy that runs the plant. He's probably going to come down when we fire our plant up. He's willing to help us get things moving and move forward, things. He's actually from Lakeview, the guy that runs the plant in Primeville. So I have been talking with Primeville, so has Troy, quite a bit on the design and how things.
Well, throughout the United States, there's literally hundreds of them. I mean, that have been commissioned. I mean, it's, it's a really common thing to have iron and manganese issues. You're not alone.
Yeah, but Primeville is fighting the same issues we do with iron and manganese, and I think they have, they have ammonia up there.
Yeah, they have ammonia issues, yeah. You guys don't have that, so.
So their system's a little more complex than ours, but the iron and manganese side of their system will be pretty identical to what we're coming with.
So do we have like a production control manager so we can make sure all these are in timelines or you're?
Troy and I are handling that. This is why I don't have much hairline. I grew taller than my hair.
Yeah, because it'd be nice to see the timeline, what's going on right now, you know, on this, to show what, where we're at, exactly. And are we ahead or are we behind and what are we waiting for?
I pretty much have that with this phase one because they have everything highlighted in different colors of where we're at and what, where we are in those certain phase, process of the phase. If you want to see that, I can get it.
Yeah, that'd be great. Be nice to see a timeline.
I get pretty close to what we're doing. Troy and I talk probably a couple times a week to make sure that we're on track and moving forward or we can move forward.
So I want to make sure I understand your, your chart. As I look to do future budget, if we're selecting alternative C, right?
Like, that's what my recommendation is, I'm not sure we have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're going to go with alternative C.
Okay. Well, I want to have a look at the recommendation. And then if either one, membrane or media, our annual operating budget for just a treatment plant will be 510,000?
Well, somewhere around 400 to 500,000, yes.
Okay.
Because you're including your replacement cost of the plant in your operating budget, which that has not been done in this town since the town was incorporated in 1800.
I know, and that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that, that number incorporates the replacement cost. Generally, replacement cost, plants are based on what, a 20-year, 25-year?
Depends on the component. Pumps, you know, may last five, 10 years. Media, you'll have to replace it on a, and, you know, 10-year cycle or whatever. But yeah, so there's valves, you know, they wear out, et cetera.
Is this a quicker way, Plan C, to build?
Than, than alternative A?
Right.
Yeah, because you're only building one plant.
Just one plant.
And it's quicker than alternative B because you're not bringing almost four miles of line from the Northwell all the way into.
It does make a lot of sense to build a treatment facility or a process for a well we're not using.
So it'll be done in.
Especially with that low of flow. You know, it's, it's pretty expensive to, that well would be a very expensive well
Okay, well, I just.
I could have gear swept in.
Any questions or concerns about where we're headed?
Well, when you say build a commercial well over the plant, it's one of those in-case things with the big, with, with the two pumps and all that stuff, is this not like a well?
No, that's a sewer plant, that's a sewer.
Oh, okay. Well, we don't want to. So why would it cost $200,000 to drill a well?
You just drill, well, you got to drill it and then develop it and then put a pump down the hole and.
And it's bigger than an operating well.
Yeah, this is a good-sized ag well, basically, is what it is. We think it'd be 200.
Depends on how deep you got to go and size.
Yeah, it may not be, it's, that's a one about memory, we don't really know.
We're looking at Crater Lake Water Company.
Well, we're going to pipe it from Crater Lake. So yeah, it's, I mean, the cost of the well, you know, it depends, you can run, where you're going to get your driller from, because drills are hard to get right now.
Right.
I've been waiting since April to get a pump guy over here to help me with the health of our well.
I'm just curious.
And we may not need it. We got to figure that out.
You can always do that after.
Well, that's what we're doing with these pump tests and aquifer checks that we're decorating.
We good?
We're good?
Yeah, that's great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Any idea what the building's going to look like?
I was thinking of Taj Mahal. A replica of that.
Glass house, lights are gold on.
Japanese kaboda.
There you go.
I have a lot of people asking me, is it going to be just some big ugly metal building out there or what?
Yes.
No.
It's going to be right on. We got a really big, old, used building. We got to go take it down and move it over.
Oh, you got China lumbermen?
Yeah, I got the one lumberman, I'm going to move that over.
That's what I thought.
Mayor Turner beauties and I have the holder. That's why I don't, I don't pick colors. I don't pick colors. Color's my owner, I always say.
I will tell them to call you. Glass house.
Well, I think we need to have a roundtable discussion about that and what we can afford, you know, the budget we have and, you know, what, what the desires are, what aesthetically it looks like, you know?
A lot of your steel buildings now have architectural metal designs, the different façades that really make them look a little bit nicer.
Yeah, you can make them look nice.
Could look like Barbie's house.
Okay, Council, do you have any more questions for him?
No.
Anybody have any questions and public comment on this?
I think the annual operating fees covered, I just paid my taxes today.
And we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 6:53?